Okay. Okay, good, good. Good, any issues for the board? Six o'clock? Nine minutes for the, so, here? Okay? All right. My cell, the biggest tile, some of the officer. Staff of best, I'm the person who has to do staff of best. Our, uh, eternity. He just had a jail. Are you, you're his, uh, member that's, uh, still? No, okay, welcome. My good. Uh, Larry Burns. The one. Um, he was, uh, a former officer, uh, by share, uh, job, uh, chair. Once more than become out of town, Lori Moore. And, uh, then, uh, what's happening? Then, plus. Probably two. You just asked. I do have to, uh, re-listen to, uh, this. Again, good evening, welcome. Uh, zoning board, we've got established received, the rules and guidelines for the administration of applications. We find out that this is an appearance of speech, it's a mandate, it's a standard. Uh, most of the town is trying. Yeah, it's not like.
Testing. Uh, the zoning board of review has established procedural rules and guidelines for the administration of applications and the conduct of its meetings and public hearings. The rules of procedure amended in December of 2021 are posted in the town's website and are available here tonight. The zoning board hears applications for relief from the provisions of the zoning ordinance and renders its decisions based on specific facts found in the documents and testimony submitted. It's the, uh, it is the applicant's burden to prove that relief from the zoning ordinance is warranted. To do so, an applicant must provide evidence that each criterion of approval listed in section two sixty thirty-three. Perviances in section two sixty thirty-four special for special use permits have been met. If you are appealing the decision of the zoning officer, administrative officer, or planning board, you are here to convince the board that the officer's or board's decision was an error, either procedurally or legally. This evening, we have one item to address, and, uh, although we do not ever take up a new item after nine o'clock. Each application shall be heard in a manner that permits the board to obtain and consider the evidence in an orderly and meaningful manner. Testimony begins with the zoning official's summary of the application and his recommendation. The application and all documentation submitted by the applicant prior to the meeting will be marked as exhibits and made part of the record. Applicants should assume that members of the zoning board have reviewed all the material submitted with the application. Tonight's presentation by the applicant should be limited to information relevant to the burden of proof and not recite or repeat information already submitted with the application. Any new information received by the board this evening will be entered into the record. However, the board retains the right to continue the public hearing to fully digest any information presented. All questioning of witnesses shall be at the direct discretion of the chair. All questioning of witnesses shall occur when the witness is called. The proponent of the witness shall ask its questions, interested party shall then ask the witness their questions, and the proponent may then ask follow-up questions. Presentation of an affirmative case by any interested party other than the applicant will be allowed as part of the public hearing following the applicant's presentation. Continuation or closing of the public hearing is at the discretion of the zoning board. Marty, oh, I'm sorry, we have two sets of minutes to approve. Uh, the first one is September tenth. Uh, both of these, please do not vote if you were not at the meeting. Okay, because we do do a vote, a voice vote. Uh, the seventh, tenth, December tenth meeting, uh, we need a motion to approve that. Okay, learned approved, uh, done approved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the second one, again, if there are any corrections, please speak up when we do this. The October eighth.
There we go, that's good. Um, I just wanted to ask for, uh, on the record, those who abstained from that last vote, please announce who abstained.
Who?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Yes. If anybody, uh, those abstained, please, uh.
So this is for September tenth?
This is for September tenth.
Larry was not here and Margaret was not here.
Okay.
Okay, so we abstained.
Thank you.
October eighth. Uh, I'll need a motion to approve.
So moved.
And, uh, we're going to vote on that, but if you were not at that meeting, please, uh, speak up now. So I, I believe, um.
It says Lori was not here, Larry Burns was not here, and Stuart was not here.
Okay. Yeah, that, that, we just want those that were not there. You're, you're classified as abstaining. Okay, uh, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed, passed. Marty, is there any change to the agenda?
No changes.
Thank you. All right, so we have the, uh, McCaslin Real Estate LLC, Westerly Agway, Friendship Street. Those people, uh, presenting, please come on forward, and Marty, could you fill us in?
The owners, McCaslin Real Estate LLC, are requesting a thirteen-foot front yard setback variance to construct a twelve hundred and thirty square foot greenhouse addition at thirty-one Friendship Street pursuant to section two sixty dash thirty-three variances and two sixty attachment ten schedule of dimensional regulations of the Town of Westerly Zoning Ordinance. The subject property, subject property contains sixty thousand four hundred and fifty-four square feet, one point three nine acres, and has five hundred and sixty-five point seven feet of frontage on Friendship Street. The property is not in a flood zone, and there are no wetlands on the property. Lot is in the light industrial zone, LI, and the surrounding neighborhood consists of LI and downtown center DC one and DC two zones. The property contains a fourteen thousand eight hundred square foot commercial farm and garden supply store, which was constructed in nineteen hundred. The applicant proposes to construct a twelve hundred and thirty square foot greenhouse addition on the north side of the building facing Friendship Street. Proposed greenhouse will require a thirteen-foot front yard setback variance. The zoning department supports this application. The lot is wide but not deep, and given the layout of the property, the proposed location is the only reasonable place near the main building to install the greenhouse. The greenhouse will be constructed within an existing fenced-in section, and given the industrial, given the industrial uses in the immediate, immediate area, it will not have any impact on the nearby properties or reduce the number of parking spaces. Now, some of you may have noticed some construction going on in the area. That's, um, they're not trying to get a head start on the project. There were other issues, uh, site issues that needed to be addressed, but I'll let the applicants, um, discuss that issue.
Okay. All right, fine. Uh. Who's doing the presentation?
This is Matt Hagerty, my manager of the store, I'm Andy McCaslin.
They need you to speak into the microphones, please.
We don't do this too often. Ma- Matthew Hagerty, the, is my manager of the store, and my name is Andy McCaslin, I'm the.
Right, I'm going to, again, uh, your name and your, uh, what, your, you, how, how you relate to this hearing, your name, address, and how you stand with this, who would you, you know, who you're representing.
Okay. My name is Andy McCaslin. I'm the owner of thirty-one Friendship Street, Westerly, Rhode Island.
My name's Matthew Hagerty, I'm the manager of the store.
Okay, I'm going to need to swear you both in, we can do it at the same time, raise your right hand, please. You swear this whole, to, um, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Okay, please note, both of them are sworn in. All right, who, who's going to start here?
Um, so. We ended up having to tear down the overhang.
Hold the microphone, please.
So I ended up having to tear down the overhang that was there due to disrepair and rot. Um, the ledger board was actually, just had base and nails into the brick, so I started looking at it and realized we had to take that down. Um, the, we pulled out a bunch of other things and noticed that the tar was in disrepair and was a hazard to both employees and to customers, so we ended up having to have that ripped out. Um, even if we didn't get the variance, we were going to have to replace the greenhouse, so we felt it necessary to go ahead and pour a concrete pad now while the weather was still good. Um, we have not ordered a greenhouse at this point because we haven't had approval or anything, so we're still waiting through the board.
All right, so basically, what you're doing now is just clearing that section and, and, uh.
Putting in a new concrete pad.
Which would have been done whether you were building the, uh, or not.
It would have, yes, yes.
Okay, now tell us about the greenhouse, uh, what.
It's, it's going to be a thirty by forty, what they call like a Venlo greenhouse, it's polycarbonate siding. Um, it's, it's actually steel. Uh, it's constructed by four by four inch steel gauge pillars, it actually has trusses. Um, very solid made, it's not the plastic covering, it's, it's actually something that is, it's one and done. Um. Has a, a vent that actually opens in the roof so we can better take care of our plants. We lose a lot of plants due to not having good covering at this point now, probably about six thousand, seven thousand dollars a year we lose the plants due to inclement weather and whatnot. So we see the structure as being kind of vital to moving forward and providing, you know, better for our products.
So did you want to add anything to what he said?
What he said.
All right, um. You've basically completed what you wanted to say?
Yeah, pretty much, yes.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, those gentlemen?
Go ahead. Now, is that, is that going to be where you have like the pavers and the propane operation?
No, it's actually directly in front of the store now. It's going to be a, due, due north of it. Um, it'll be from the east side wall, forty feet to the west, and then thirty feet out towards the road.
Pretty much where that awning was.
Exactly, yes, it went six feet beyond the awning is what we're looking for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh-huh.
Uh, the microphone, you want to speak, I, I do the same thing. I visited the site and, um, I noticed that the, the work, the, the base has been done, or partially done, and the bollards have been put up to protect whatever you're going to put there. Um, but that, that kind of moved the parking spaces almost to the, I pulled in just to see, and, um, the back of my vehicle, I have an SUV.
Correct.
It meets the sidewalk, which is not inconsistent with the rest of the properties in that, on that street.
Right.
Which I find very weird, but that's the street.
The.
But I'm wondering, my question is to, I guess to our solicitor, uh, Scott, would be. If the original site was approved for these parking spaces to be forward where they are, is it okay now to move them that close to the sidewalk? Um, where they're going to be? Uh, uh, is the town, my, my concern is, is would the town be liable for any mishaps that would take place being so close to the sidewalk?
The applicant is not, is, the applicant is not proposing any changes to the site specific to parking, so what's there is existing, and it's staying the way it is.
So the, I, can I?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So the, when you, uh, pull in to go Christmas tree shopping, for example, and you have a, a larger vehicle, the fence used to be sort of like, uh, the fence, and then there were some tables right in front of that, typically in the summer for plants. And some of that space is being taken so that larger vehicles can't pull as close as they used to. So, he's asking that if there, if you have a larger vehicle that's hanging out into the sidewalk, which it didn't used to, is it a problem for the town?
So there, you, you're suggesting there were parking spaces in front of the proposed greenhouse that will continue to be parking and may not be adequately sized?
Yes, or it, well, they are, it's just that his.
Yeah, you're going to find, you're going to, you're going to have, I mean, it's a, it's a basically a landscape pickup, plants, trucks are going to be more pulling in there.
People walking in the street.
And then there's people walking on the sidewalks, plus it's a pretty busy road. The, uh. My, my only concern was, not so much, I mean, the rest of the properties I see are.
Please wait, sir.
Are pretty much the same, but, um, my question is, is does, does the town pick up any liability on something going, happening? Because now those, those spaces are pretty close to the sidewalk, so if somebody's loading their truck or their vehicle with plants, uh, bags of stuff, whatever, it's pretty close to the road.
Yeah, so the short answer is no, but why don't we have the applicant address the direct issue you're asking about? Which is a concern on how they're going to manage traffic and, and specifically cars parking in that area. So why don't we ask the applicant to address that?
Sir, would you like to address this?
Yes, um, the actual parking spot has not changed at all. The, the parking bumpers that are there now were pushed back about two feet in order to cut the tar to get our concrete where we want it to be. The bollards are actually exactly where the fence line was, so once the construction is complete, they put the tar back in place, the parking bumpers are going to move back, they, we have not changed anything. It'll be the, about, it, it, it won't be any less than what was originally there. I mean, we could always address it, maybe compact cars only or some, you know what I mean, in that area, I, we could accommodate something along those lines.
I mean, that would have to be something that you would have to address if, if it's necessary.
Okay.
So, yeah, may I?
Do it.
Yeah, um, so that, basically, the, the facility itself is going to have the same parking, the same, um, to and from. The warehouse is remaining intact, that whole area is remaining intact, the parking is down there, the ramp is the same for anybody who has issues. Right. So between the building and the, um, the new structure, you have a short walkway or fence or a set of steps that goes up into the building?
Yes.
So is that going to be enclosed or is it adjacent or?
I'm sorry, like, to the front, to the front door?
The two buildings still separate? Yes.
Wait, I think handicap goes out.
Where the little.
Yeah, yes, ev- everything is staying the same, nothing has changed, nothing.
Going just to be two separate structures?
Yes.
And if somebody wants to go pay on the inside of the store, there's enough easement, there's enough way for them to walk and get up.
Yes.
Okay, same, it's basically the same, you're just enclosing the area where the, um, the plants, where I go to, yeah, where you go by the pots and stuff on the inside, okay? And that's what you were talking about, the rotting structure, is that building?
Correct.
I got, yeah.
Lean to that was coming off, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any other, uh, questions or comments? Is there anybody, uh, in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak against it? Okay, and anybody who needs more information? All right, then, uh, I will, uh, entertain a motion to, uh.
You should pull the board first, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, let me pull the board to see where they stand. Uh, Stu, why don't you start? You're in favor, okay?
I'm in favor of the application.
I am very much in favor.
I'm in favor of the application.
Also in favor.
Also in favor.
Okay, in that case, we'll entertain a motion to, uh, close the hearing. Okay, uh, and all those in favor? Aye, okay, I then turn it over to Lori.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have before us a request by owners McCaslin Real Estate LLC, who are requesting a thirteen-foot front yard setback variance to construct a twelve hundred and thirty square foot greenhouse addition at thirty-one Friendship Street pursuant to section two thirty dash thirty-three variances and two sixty attachment ten schedule of dimensional regulations of the Town of Westerly Ordinance. The subject property contains sixty thousand fifty-five square feet, which is one point three eight acres, and has a five hundred and sixty-five point seven feet of frontage on Front- Friendship Street. The property is not in a flood zone, and there are no wetlands on the property. The lot is in the light industrial zone, and the surrounding neighborhood also consists of light industrial and downtown center properties. The property contains a fourteen thousand eight hundred square foot commercial farm and garden supply store, which was constructed in nineteen hundred. The zoning board held a public meeting concerning this application on November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Zoning board members, Chairman Lawrence Chappa, Vice Chair Dawn Robinson, Larry Burns, Alan Martone, Lori Moore, First Alternate Leonard Sepinari, and Second Alternate Stuart Miller were present and heard testimony during the entirety of the public hearing. There was no one absent and no one recused. The zoning board was provided with a narrative by zoning official Martin Loyzelle dated November third, twenty twenty-five, which outlined the details of the application and was summarized by Mr. Loyzelle during the public hearing, thereby made a part of the record. The following individuals spoke as representatives of the applicant, Matthew Hagerty, the representative and the store manager, and Andrew McCaslin, the applicant. Nobody spoke in support of the request, no one spoke in, against the request, and no additional information was entered into the record. Mr. Chairman, through the public hearing process, the board heard that the applicant's request for a dimensional variance is based on, the location described is the only reasonable place to install the greenhouse, having no impact on nearby properties and not reducing number of parking places. The following plans and specifications are hereby made a part of this approval and may not be altered, amended, or changed in any material way unless approved by the Westerly Zoning Board of Review. This is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. In this case, the claimed hardship is that, if granted, the requested variance will result in minimal relief for reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use. It will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based, because the zoning district is designed for areas which have historically housed industrial development in proximity to business and residence. The hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, will amount to more than a mere inconvenience, meaning that relief sought is minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use to which the property is proposed to be devoted. The fact that a use may be more profitable or that a structure may be more valuable after the relief is granted is not grounds for relief. Here, the use is a farm and garden supply store and is a permitted use. In addition, the applicant has demonstrated that if dimensional variance is not granted, denial would amount to more than a mere inconvenience, because the addition of an onsite greenhouse would allow the business to continue to provide its customers a better variety of live annuals and perennials in a more controlled environment. As such, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a thirteen-foot front yard setback variance to construct a twelve hundred and thirty square foot greenhouse addition at thirty-one Friendship Street pursuant to two sixty dash thirty-three variances and two sixty attachment ten schedule of dimensional regulations of the Town of Westerly Zoning Ordinance with no following conditions.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Carrie, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I see that we have no continued business. Um, you see, next month, we have two hearings listed. And, uh, under staff comments, I, I think, uh, we wanted to talk about the calendar for next year.
That's correct. The, um, twenty twenty-six calendar, uh, the November meeting falls on Veterans Day. It's a holiday, so we have to, uh, either do the meeting the week before or the week after. Probably best to do it the week after, which would be November eighteenth. Um, so the calendars will be ready to approve at the December meeting, so we want to straighten this out now, so, you know, does anyone have an issue with, uh, with bumping it to, uh, November eighteenth?
November would be going the following week. Instead of the eleventh. Yeah, third week instead of the second.
Yeah.
All right? Okay.
And then once again, we have, we'll have two people, uh, absent in December.
Right, so anybody else who feels, and, you know, something comes up and you can't make the next meeting, uh, please let, let Lori know and, uh.
Uh, who won't be here for the December meeting? Okay. Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, so five, four on this side will be as full, voting as full members. But again, if anything else comes up, please let Lori know and, and, uh, and Marty too. Okay? All right, just need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? We're going home.